Starting today's March 5th, Community Redevelopment Agency meeting. At this time, we have to take care of a bit of housekeeping, and that is providing every board member the opportunity to disclose any ownership or control of interest directly or indirectly involving property within the CRA.
I have to declare.
All right, Councilman Townsend. I also declare interest in properties within the CRA. Any other members? All right. At this time, you'll see on the agenda, I have placed an update for all of us titled, "The Mayor's Urban Redevelopment Advisory Committee." As most of you know by now, the mayor has appointed a seven-member panel that will convene over a period of four months. They have been given a set of, basically, mission statements or goals. And in addition to that seven-member panel, the mayor has appointed a consultant that is involved in this particular committee, again, not as a committee member, so that provides this individual the opportunity to gather information from various facets within our community. And at this time, I am inviting Mr. Chuck Tessier to step up here and provide us an introduction to, not only to himself, kind of what he has done, where he's from, for anyone that's been under a rock and doesn't know Chuck. This is their opportunity to find out. And then, Mr. Tessier, if you will also provide us some insight on what has occurred already with the introductory meeting and what you see ahead.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate this opportunity. I commend all of you, I think, on all of the work that has gone on in the past to bring Pensacola where it is today. You know, everybody, when I was, when I came here three years ago for the first time at the invitation of Quentin Studer, he took me around town, he introduced me to a whole lot of folks, and then he, we went to dinner with some people, and he says, "All right, tell us what you think." And I said, "There's one word, and that's potential." And there's incredible potential here. There's so much work has gone on in the past with the creation of CRA. The, some of the crisis that has hit this community has actually added to the catalyst that has brought about its rebirth at this point in time with Ivan and BP and those kinds of things that have added opportunities to the plate. And I think that at this point in time, you're really poised to make some significant change. My background, I'm from Asheville, North Carolina. I was very instrumental in a lot of the redevelopment that happened there. And we went through a catalyst, catalytic change in about 1985, when in '85 to '90, there was almost $200 million reinvested in a five-year period into the existing building stock downtown. And it completely changed a city from where it was to where it is today. And a lot of that, you know, we learned a lot in doing that. Some things good, some things bad, that kind of thing, but hopefully, we can, you know, bring some ideas and help to this happen. Some people have talked about this committee as being, "Well, you know, these things, we have a plan." It's not about creating a new plan. There's lots of plans on the table. There's lots of programs and ideas and initiatives that are underway. It's about taking those initiatives and plans and actually making them happen. And what is the strategic plan to do that, to execute? Because you can't do everything at once. If you look at the 2010 CRA plan, or you look at the plan for the historic district that was done, or you look at the work the Port Committee did, or you look at the private development stuff that's being proposed, or the Maritime Park design guidelines that are there, and you look at all that and you put it all on the wall at one time, you say to yourself, "How are you going to do that? How are you going to make it happen?" And especially at a time when CRA has used all the money that it had made in the past toward the public improvements that are going into these projects. So it's at a time now to refill the coffers, if you will, which is going to take the addition of new tax base. And the addition of new tax base is about creating a context of confidence that the private sector can invest in. So when it became time to begin to look at what private initiatives were have, it was sort of like, "Well, what's the strategic plan? Where's the public investment coming from? Where's the private capital coming from? How do we best go after those things?" So I think this committee is really a group of volunteers that is here to help you sort through a whole battery of information, and believe me, it's a huge, you know, it's a huge body of stuff, to help sort through that and bring back some ideas and suggestions. The thing that's important to know about this committee, and it's been very well said, is they're not decision-makers. You're the decision-makers. You're the people who ultimately make decisions, along with the county commissioners, or along with the ECUA board, or along with the CMPA board, or along with private developers, or any of the other number of key stakeholders that are going to make a difference in what your downtown becomes. So the vision, if you will, is out of the grand plans that have been done, what are those things that are doable? And where are they? And how do you get them done? And I think that's the goal of this. I think you've received in your packet sort of the mission that was laid out, which is all about housing, jobs, rebuilding the waterfront, bringing the activities and amenities that will bring those people down here, and then, how do you market that? And how do you make that happen? So those are the kind of the key pieces of this. I'll be happy to ask, you know, answer any questions that I can that you may have, and why don't we just open up for that?
Yes, Councilman Gerald.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First question I would have for you, Mr. Tessier, and I guess your committee will have to work together to determine how this is going to be handled, but you mentioned, is it Asheville, North Carolina?
Yes, sir.
In your efforts with your redevelopment and restructuring of your business corridor, how did that, how did you handle neighborhoods where you had private property owners who still resided in the area? And that's part of what we're going to experience here in the CRA. We have some individuals, and I've been contacted by a few of them, who are property owners or private residents, and as you create this new tax base, how will that impact them? And, you know, they're not moving along like a business. They're moving along like many retired persons who still live in this area. How did you all handle that in, y'all, that's southern talk. How did you all handle that up in Asheville?
I do talk southern. It's okay. You know, when you get into a development process, there's winners and losers. And one of the things that we have been very clear about is who is this plan for? And the people that it's for are for the people of this community, not outsiders coming in, not people who speculate on land, that kind of thing. But it's for the people of this community to benefit from that increase in values and the changes that happen. So what you build is important because you want to make sure that what you build is going to provide for the needs of this community. Secondly, in terms of how do they benefit from that, you know, if you've got a lot up here in Belmont de Villiers, and it's been in your family a long time, a lot of times in a speculative process like this that happens, people come in and try to buy that lot at 50 cents on the dollar, you know, in an empty vacant lot, and that person doesn't get the benefit out of that because they end up, they end up just selling out cheap. They may not have the capital to take that lot and go build a house themselves and sell it, or have the capacity to do that. And the way you do that, in my view, is you bridge that gap by bringing some capital and technical resources together with that lot owner so that, at the point that that house is developed and leased or sold, that that person can participate in doing that. But it comes back to what I said about creating a context of confidence that that person can do that within, that they can trust. And to me, that's important.
Okay, and thank you for that information. And the other thing I would like to have would be a schedule of your upcoming meetings so that I can pass that information on to the citizens who have contacted me, and they can be present to talk with you and that committee at the time.
Was that in the packet for the meeting days?
Yes, yes, it was. And Councilman Gerald, I felt like all of us needed to be able to do some planning, and you did ask the question. I expected so. The schedule of the committee's meetings is provided in the packet, and conveniently, I made sure that unless there's any reason that there would be anything to displace our, the CRA's meeting schedule, I currently have placed on, as the CRA scheduling for the next four months coincides with the same week. So what I hope to have is for those of us that can't participate or send representatives to be at the advisory committee's meetings, Mr. Tessier will be invited at all of our CRA meetings to give us an update. And I would like to emphasize again that by having Mr. Tessier involved, what I think he provides is a very useful bridge that can communicate to the various entities or stakeholders in the CRA, some of which are in control of some large land masses and buildings. And I think we have, again, the opportunity while navigating through the sometimes difficult constraints or guidelines of the sunshine law, Mr. Tessier can speak to these various entities, or I think you called them super block owners. But all of the players will have an opportunity to, I think Chuck's going to do a good job trying to meet with them.
The real difference in building a downtown versus going out in the suburbs and taking a big greenfield and building a new town by one owner is there's lots of players. And you've got to go sit at their campfire and understand where they're coming from to be able to come up with a plan that's workable.
Any other questions? Yes?
Yes, I just want to thank you for coming and sharing your thoughts. You know, I've seen you a lot at the CMPA meetings.
Correct.
Councilwoman Myers, could you use your microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Okay. I've seen you over the years at the CMPA meetings, and I was just wondering, I really haven't had the opportunity to meet you and talk to you, even though I've seen you a lot. And, of course, you know generally why I attend those meetings, to make sure that the ADA is, you know, enforced, and that people with disabilities have an opportunity to have access to the park. But the three years you've been here, what has your main job been? And are you presently employed now? And are your, the time you're spending with this advisory committee, is that volunteer time, or?
I have been, I was brought to Pensacola. There was a group that came to Asheville to learn what we had done there, and I was introduced to Quentin, and Brian, and a number of other people at that point in time. I was asked to come down and give some views here, and about six months later, I was put on retainer by Quentin Studer to work with him and represent his interest in Maritime Park, and I have been doing that. When Quentin brought me down here, it was really three goals in mind. One goal was Maritime Park. Another goal was what potential private development can happen in terms of being able to contribute to the community. And a third was to look at the overall economic development of downtown Pensacola and the surrounding neighborhoods. And when, almost the day after, we got things pretty well settled with the expansion and that kind of thing, Quentin says, "All right, it's time to switch gears now to the other things that you were brought down here to do." So I am on retainer with him, and I, but I am on loan, I'm like a loaned executive from Mr. Studer's organization to the mayor's office.
So basically, we're not having, well, I say the advisory committee.
The city is not paying at all.
Not paying to pay.
That's correct.
Okay, so.
And I spend about, I spend half my time in Pensacola and half my time in Asheville, and I'm, I drive eight hours every weekend.
Okay. I just wanted to know a little more about you because I've seen you so much, and say hi, and that's about it. But thanks for sharing that.
Yes, Councilwoman DeWes.
Thank you, Chairman Spencer. And I also want to thank Mr. Tessier for your efforts, both before in helping with the CMP, but also with this endeavor. And you mentioned the CRA plan, the Port Committee, the CMP, and the historic district. And I just wanted to add one thing to that, even though it's not part of the CRA, the Hollis-Williams-Greenway project, the Highway 110 was elevated when it was built for a reason, to hopefully not kill neighborhoods, but it's ended up being a no-man's land. And when the CRA plan was done, Looney Rigs and Kiss, and I don't know if it was gratis or very minimal fee, but they also did a plan for Hollis-Williams and did some drawings, and we had stakeholder meetings because there's so many.
I got a copy of that last week.
Good. So I just wanted to make sure that's part of the conversation because the community garden is thriving. Long Hollow has that space. They're trying to work with the arts community. There's some huge opportunities coming to pass in that area that would be in support of all of the CRA as well, because it would be great for workforce housing, redeveloping those neighborhoods. So I just wanted to make sure that's part of the considerations that you were aware of.
It is.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Wu.
I'm a little late, but after three years, welcome to Pensacola. This is just a curiosity question. You said you've been to dinner with several folks. Who in the council have you been to dinner with?
I don't think, I mean, I've had dinner with Brian several times. He and I have worked together. I really want to meet each of you individually and get your thoughts and ideas in terms of doing it, but I have not, I have not actively been one-on-one meeting with council members at all.
He's been busy working on the stadium. I will give him that credit. Okay, Councilwoman Myers' hand was up, and then Councilman Gerald's.
Yeah, I would just like to say, you know, and I'm sure you've heard me speak about this, and I speak about it often on city council and the CRA, I have a lot of concerns about the infrastructure, especially as it impacts the park. I feel very strongly that if the United States Justice Department came down here and looked at our infrastructure in the downtown, I have serious doubts that we would be in compliance with the ADA. And I really hope that the advisory committee, I know that they're very concerned about infrastructure. So at some point, I would like to get together with you and just, you know, point out some things and have a kind of discussion about sidewalks and pedestrian and bicycle access to all of downtown, not just the CMP, the Maritime Park, even though that's going to be extremely important.
It's an important piece of the puzzle.
Yes, Councilman Gerald.
Well, I had lunch before I came down today, big lunch, but I'm going to lay it on the If the city council is the CRA, and this is nothing against you, Mr. Tessier, but I don't like the sound of this, and it goes back to Mr. Wu's question, who else have you had dinner with, or lunch, or whatever? But I didn't know that we were a CRA, and Mr. Studer seems to think he's a CRA as well. And that's leaving us out of the picture. And if we are going to do things to develop downtown Pensacola as a CRA, as a council, we need to be at the table at each of those meetings. And it's unfortunate that, and my comments at this time are meant to make sure that we do not get any further off the track. Whenever there is a consideration, because if he's making plans, or you're making plans, and then we're making plans, and it all just runs together, and we'd sit in meetings wasting time talking about who's going to do what. So any future plans and/or meetings should involve, or at least give the council members an opportunity to be present as we move forward.
Absolutely. And I want to make some things very, very clear here, is that, number one, this is not my plan. This is, this is a plan that is really going to be ultimately implemented by you. It's up to you to make decisions about what happens with the property next door, what happens with CMPA property, what happens with, with how public expenditures are funded. You have a responsibility in terms of the budget of CRA and how that happens. Where's the tax base going to come from? Where, how can you make those things happen? So number one is, it is your plan and your community. And what we're trying to do with this, and I think the mayor's office in terms of trying to bring this together, is to provide some opportunity to take all of that, that's outside of any one of those stakeholders, and to put that information on the table so that everyone can see it in a very transparent way, and be able to make comment and have on that, and then come out with some comments and recommendations that hopefully, at the end of the day, can be helpful. But legitimately, what happens with that is up to you. And I think it needs to be done in that spirit. And certainly, what I have said is, in talking about this committee, it has several functions. One, the number one function's educational.
Okay. I can understand your role, and my comments are in no way intended to stifle what you're here to do, because I do believe that we could probably use your help, and in fact, it would be welcome. But what I'm referring to is the, if we're working together as a city, as a council and mayor, and trying to accomplish and to move the city forward, it has to be done in such a way that we're all aware of what's going on.
Absolutely. And it goes beyond just council and mayor, is what I'm saying. It goes beyond, it goes to the school board, it goes to the CMPA board, it goes to ECUA board, it goes to the county commissioners, it goes to a whole lot of people that are going to be involved in terms of bringing that information. And if we can do nothing but, number one, provide a forum where all the information does get put out on the table so that you can see it at the same time and how it stacks up, and number two, in some ways, act as a facilitator to bring those groups together to come up with some solutions that are workable among all those groups, then I think this committee would have formed a very valuable purpose.
And I certainly thank you, because I believe that's a part of what prompted the telephone calls that I received, because the individuals that talked to me and brought certain things to my attention, apparently, they'd been told some things that hasn't been, you know, on the table, and they're concerned and they're interested. And my district is on the east side of town, and although I grew up on the west side, but folks are calling me saying, "Well, what's going on? They're doing this and doing that." And I could not answer their questions because I wasn't in the loop. So from this point on, I would insist that I be in the loop, and I will make sure that those individuals that have contacted me, I'll get back with them, to make sure that they have a contact for you and the schedule of meetings, et cetera, et cetera, so that they can all come to the table.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Thank you, Chairman Spencer. I just wanted to tag along on that because I had received an email from a committee member soliciting information, my opinion, some opportunity to consider financing. And I am very concerned, and I wrote this back, I have a great deal of respect for everyone on the committee, but that we should not be involved in ourselves as individual CRA members and not have that discussion with our fellow board members. We act as a board, we make decisions as a board, and I'm not a resident of the CRA, and that I felt that we should limit our discussion or, you know, an opportunity for giving our opinions. At least me personally, I will not be doing that with individual members or at the committee, that I said this will function much as the other committees that were appointed by the mayor, that the expertise of the members of that committee will find their way through the mayor's agenda items. And I don't mean to be ugly by that, I just think that we, as a board, should respect that we are a board that makes decisions, and that's where we would have the discussions about the things brought forward from the mayor, just like with the pension committee that was put together and had a great deal of good information that was brought forward, and the Port Committee, and that this is the opportunity for the mayor to do diligence on all of these other reports that have come into place and bring a plan to us. And I appreciate that updates will be given along the way so that we can, you know, have a certain amount of buy-in from council, but ultimately, or from CRA, excuse me, ultimately, it will be something that's a finished product that we'll have to discuss. And I'm just concerned about, I will not be interjecting myself on an individual level. I'll have my discussions here with my fellow CRA board members.
Yes, and certainly, I felt it was important for this introduction to take place. When it did, I think with Mr. Tessier's schedule of every week or every other week, if this introduction could have happened sooner, certainly, it would have. But I understand completely, and the comments that have been made, I think the mayor has put together a great committee, and again, anyone's invited, those are public meetings and noticed, so the attendance and participation is up to everyone individually.
I think each of you kind of received sort of our initial draft of eight or 10 meetings that are going to happen in terms of all the information trying to be brought onto the table, and it's a huge body of information. And part of that is really to understand where you are with respect to some of these items, because, as I said, you're going to be the one that makes the decision-making. You know, you are one, you are going to be doing that. And so to be able to go out in isolation of that and try to say, "Well, this is what we think is realistic," is not realistic. What's realistic is what you think. And so your input, your every step of the way, any information and input and that kind of thing, we want that as much as possible on the table. The beauty about this committee is none of them are in a decision-making property. It's not the same players who've always been there. It's a sort of a neutral group that is really doing everything in their power to bring information together, to bring people's different concerns and ideas and opinions together, to be able to come back and then say, "Well, this is what we've heard. This is what we think could be realistic," and find those solutions that maybe individually wouldn't necessarily come out.
All right. Any more comments?
Anything else?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Tessier. All right, item number four on the agenda under action items, and that is the approval of our previous CRA meeting, February 6th. And we have a motion for approval of the February 6 minutes.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. That was an easy consent. All right, action item under, again, number 4B, "Approval of Amendments to the Economic Development Agreement with Disposition of Property between the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Pensacola and Hicks Art Technologies Incorporated." I will call on Ryan now to give us a report on that extension request, which I understand was received in writing on February 29th.
Right. It's included in your agenda package. If you remember, on October 13th, the CRA executed an agreement with Hicks Art Technologies for the disposition of property at 120 West Government, and they did request in writing on February 29th, an extension of the financing deadline. I believe it would be July 1st. Are there any questions? Would you like? The agreement was in your CRA board agendas, as was the request.
If you haven't had a chance to review that letter, I think it's important to note, I did a little bit of further investigation and made sure it was proper for me to do so. I contacted the architects of that project, wanted to know where were they in their conceptual and the development plans since, in addition to asking for this time extension, I think there were three items that that touched on, one being, of course, the time for financing approval. approval. But what jumped out for me to, which I think was exciting, was the fact that one of their reasons for the request was an expansion in the scope of work, and that is the project appears to be increasing in size from 30,000 square feet to 40,000 square feet. That was confirmed by the architects of record at this time. And the extension to me, after looking at, again, the remedies, all of the terms that remain in place should they in any form or fashion default, there are no modifications being asked for on those very important provisions. I feel like the CRA is still properly protected, and therefore, I recommend approving this time request.
Move of approval.
All right.
Second.
All right. We have a motion. A second now, discussion.
I have to abstain from the vote.
All right. And Councilwoman DeWes will be abstaining. All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. That passes unanimously. Do we have any other discussion items? Any new business? CRA is adjourned.
He's sick this afternoon, so you...
We can't hear you.
Yeah, thank you. To indicate the chairman is sick this afternoon, so I will be conducting the meeting. Prior to going into the formal meeting, I think it's almost diligent of me to say happy birthday to one of our colleagues, Councilwoman DeWes. Happy birthday.
Thank you. Thank you. And Jeff so kindly brought cake for everyone, so I'll make sure, yes, I'm going to get that to the back of the room.
Well, since you brought cake...
See, I can cut, yeah, I have enough for everyone.
Since you brought cake, I'm like, "Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Marion. Happy birthday to you."
Thank you.
Okay. We'll have Board Forum, does anyone here would like to speak to the Board Forum? We have...
You don't have any?
Okay. Okay. Counselor Action, the first thing is appointment of Construction Board of Adjustment and Appeals. We have four vacancies and we have four incumbents that are, express a willingness and desire that they will continue. So, what's your pleasure?
Moved to approve by acclamation.
Second.
Proven moved. Second, that we approve the appointment by acclamation. In readiness? All in favor?
Aye.
Close this, pass unanimously. We also have an appointment to the Parks and Recreation Board. We have one vacancy and one person has expressed to continue the incumbent. Are there any questions on that? Can I get a motion?
Moved to approve by acclamation.
Second.
Proven moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close this. Thank you. Mayor Communications in action.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our first item on the agenda for, under Mayor's Communications in Action, is property acquisition X-2418, X-2420, and X-2447/2447P Campus Heights subdivision. The recommendation is, and clearly, I did not write this recommendation title as I go through this, but that the city council authorize the purchase of parcel X-2418, parcel ID number 14-1S-29-2200-030-003, in the amount of $200,000 plus $5,700 for closing and miscellaneous costs, plus $2,400 for legal fees, plus a 10% contingency in the amount of $20,810. And parcel X-2420, parcel ID number 01-1S-29-2200-0003, in the amount of $490,000 plus $9,230 for closing and miscellaneous costs, plus $2,400 for legal fees, plus a 10% contingency in the amount of $50,163. amount of $500,000 plus $9,300 for closing and miscellaneous costs, plus $2, excuse me, $2,800 for legal fees, plus a contingency in the amount of $51,210 for a total authorization of $1,344,013 for all three parcels. Further recommendation is made that city council authorize the mayor to assume all existing commercial leases at each parcel at time of closing.
What's your pleasure?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Have a second. Thank you. Questions?
Make her the motion first.
Okay, and I have one question before we go. On assuming that the leases, are they going to cause any, would you explain that, are they going to cause any hardships that are addressed to the city in assuming the leases?
No, sir. And the reason that we are assuming the leases as opposed to any other action is that it allows us the opportunity to not provide for relocation expenses. We will keep the leases up until the time that the leases expire.
Okay. And the other question that I had noted regarding the closing, are we absorbing all of the cost of the closing and all the other documentaries and all that, and the seller is not taking any burden in that regard? And if so, could you explain the rationale?
Yeah, and I'll have to ask for some clarification on that from airport staff.
Okay. Yes, Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Vice President. These pieces, I was trying to read through there a little bit. They have buildings on them that are leased out at the current, at this time? Mr. Reynolds? There are buildings that are being leased out on these properties?
That's correct.
Who oversees these leases? I'm just curious. Does the airport staff oversee those leases? Someone on the airport staff?
As it currently stands, that's correct. I think that what city staff needs to do in the future is to have a more integral look at those particular leases just to ensure that things are not being dropped, frankly. And I plan on putting something to that effect together.
Yeah, I would encourage that. I think that that'd be a good direction to head in. I know there's some, many warehouses over there that the airport owns, and I believe that that management contract might be coming up this year, I believe, that oversees those warehouses that we own. And I'd love that to be included in that discussion as that moves along. The other thing, it looks like these pieces are very, they're adjacent to the airport, and at some point, I'm hoping that we look at annexing those properties that are adjacent to the airport. It looks like there's only a few pieces left that we could almost take most of that area there and annex them into the city.
Yes, yes, sir, and we will be doing that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Councilwoman DeWes.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I did have a couple of questions. I couldn't remember if there was actually a contingency on the previous contracts that we have approved, and if that was the typical 10% and what that is to cover. And then, we had asked that we get a final settlement statement, and it's just my mortgage lending days. I think it becomes crystal clear who's paying what, kind of along the lines of your question, Mr. Vice President. And I don't know if a preliminary one is available beforehand when we're making this decision. That would be nice to have when we're doing these purchases. So, just an explanation of the 10% contingency and what's that covering?
That's a very good question. That actually was the first question I had asked on the last group that we had brought forward, and it is something that we have traditionally done, is to have that contingency just in case there was something that came up, much like any of the other contracts that we have done at the city that have to have council approval. From my perspective, it's probably not necessary, but to have that safety blanket, if you will, that cushion, it is something that the city has traditionally done.
Right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thing from the audience? What's your pleasure? All in favor?
Aye.
Close this, pass unanimously. Next.
Mr. President, the next subject we have is contract for management operations and maintenance between City of Pensacola and Community Maritime Park Associates Incorporated, CNPA. Recommendation is that city council approve a contract between the City of Pensacola and CNPA providing for management, operations, and maintenance of the Vince Webb Senior Community Maritime Park. Further, that city council approve a supplemental budget resolution to provide funding for said contract.
What's your pleasure?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Second. Proven moved in second. Comments? Adam DeWes.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I just wanted some clarification on how we're going to track the actual costs. I know that after the hurricanes with FEMA, we had to track for reimbursement, actual time invested. I don't want to see the CMP become a black hole of unknowns. I think if we, part of the daunting task is trying to go back and document something after the fact. I would like to see something in place for tracking time, both on a public works part of the House and also for neighborhood services, and I wonder if that's been contemplated and how we'll go about doing that.
Do we have any comments on that?
Yes, Mr. President, we will. We certainly will be tracking all of that because that's how we're going to get repaid. And I can have Mr. David Flaherty certainly come up and explain that in a little more detail. Mr. Flaherty?
Thank you, Councilmembers. The, each budget, particularly neighborhood service for us, in relationship to the management agreement for the parking, the vendors, and the community activities that are going to go on in the park, we've established a new project code or a division within our department. So, it has its own budget associated with it. So, we will track it, just like we do our athletic program, our recreation program, our community centers, our swimming pools. We'll have project numbers that are coded appropriately. We'll also have revenue numbers as well. So, tracking it really won't be the issue, and that's done, obviously, through the finance department, and they set up all those project numbers.
So, that'll become part of the monthly report that we get as a finance report, or should the council make that request of the finance department?
We certainly can make that available. Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other question? Any questions from the audience?
I do have a...
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thank you. I think Councilwoman DeWes brings up a good point, and quite frankly, I would like to see that in the contract because things tend to get lost. I've been to a lot of CNPA meetings over the years, and the issue of tracking how money has been spent has sometimes been an issue. So, I would like it to be set forth in the contract as to the reporting requirements to city council regarding the expenditures and receipts of money. I want to bring up another issue, however. It's an issue that I've brought up before, and it has to do with what type of instrumentality of the city is the CNPA. And I bring this up because there are three city council members who serve on that board. And the charter provides that no elected city official shall hold any appointive city office, city board membership, or city employment while in office, except as may be provided by state law. I don't know what state law provides that city council members can serve on the CNPA that is now a so-called instrumentality of the city. Previously, city council members served on the board because the CNPA was a private nonprofit entity and not an instrumentality of the city. The resolution that was passed, which provided that the city council members could serve on the CNPA, specifically said that it would be, it was designated a special district. It's never complied with the requirements of the law to be a special district under 189. So, I really would like to know, and what law under the charter gives the city council members the authority to serve on the CNPA? I'm not going to vote to approve this contract until I know the answer definitively to that So, city attorney, do you know the answer to that question? Specifically, what law, state law, allows for dual office holding on the CNPA?
Before we venture into that, will that have any impact on the action that we are doing, any significant impact on what we contemplating on this vote?
It will...
I don't know, but...
Yes.
Mr. Cheney, would you care to venture in this?
Can I answer why he asked me a question?
Yes.
Yes, because I would ask the three members of the, who are serving on the CNPA, they've already voted for this. I think it would be a conflict of interest, and I don't know that they, I would ask them to recuse themselves from voting on this. That's the impact it would have.
Thank you.
It's your turn.
All right. Let's see if I can straighten this out a little bit. If the question is, may a city council member serve as a trustee of the CNPA simultaneously with their council membership and not violate the dual office holding provision, I believe the answer is yes, they may. If the question is, what exactly is a CNPA, then I would opine that it's clearly not a special district. But I wrote a memo some time ago, I'd have to go back and take a look at it. It really, it's, the CMP is whatever it needs to be to accomplish the particular business purpose that needs to be accomplished.
And I find that very troubling. And the charter says state law, so I need to know which specific state law gives them the authority to have dual office holding. And I find it really troubling that the CNPA can just become anything we want it to at any time. If we need new market tax credits, it's a nonprofit, private entity that owns the multi-use stadium and all the public improvements over there. If we want it to be an instrumentality of the city for the purposes of dual office holding and to sell, build America bonds, then it becomes that. I have a real problem with that because that's not transparency, that's just willy-nilly it being whatever we want it to be. And I think it's a serious problem if we, because now we can appoint all the board members, but if we serve on the CNPA as council members and we are not clear under what state law, specific state law, and I only know of a few, and we don't, the 189 is one of them. And I think when the resolution was passed, it said special district, and it... resolution was passed, it said special district, and it meant a special dependent district under 189, and we've never complied with the law to become a dependent special district. And I'm going to keep being bothered by this until I get a definitive answer. Which law? Tell me the law, the specific Florida statute that gives the City Council members the authority to serve on the CMP.
And understand, I'm only going to state this so we have a clear record, because, you know, you and I go back a long time, and this isn't about you and me. But, for the record, the CMP was never contemplated to be a special district. It never was a special district. It's not a special district, and it never will be a special district. That's the best I can tell you on that one.
But the problem is, we have to have a law that provides for dual office holding, and 189 specifically provides for dual office holding for dependent special districts. So, what I'm asking is, what law are we going on to provide us the ability to have dual office holding? I think it is in the city's interest to be able to appoint all of the CMP members. That is in the city's interest. However, you know, I have a problem with the City Council members serving in that capacity. We could... And that's why I will be voting against this agreement here, because I'm not sure what the CMP is, and I would like to be able to vote for this agreement. But until I get a clear answer as to who has authority to approve this agreement, I won't be voting for it.
Councilwoman DeWes.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I'm going to go further down this path, and I don't mean to offend any council member with my statements. But when this came forward for us to consider, I read in great detail several times the contract, and had some questions of staff and also stakeholders in the community, because we are moving into a different phase. I mean, we've had a almost decade-long discussion about what this is to be, and it is absolutely beautiful what it's become. I just toured it last week. But my thoughts were this, because we're moving out of the construction phase and the decision-making phase on a great deal of this, and that logically, the CMP, in its duties, first of all, but also in its composition, is going to change drastically. I don't know that it will need to be 14-member board. And one of the things that we could consider is that the City Council members resign when this project is complete. And from there going forward, whatever the board composition is, if they choose to reduce their size to whatever's acceptable for the new market tax credits, and only meet as needed, because we're not in the phase of design, construction, build-out, all of these things, complying to the new markets tax credits. So, I don't know... Mr. Messer will have to lead me through this, but if we can approve this and have it be subject to the resignation of the three council members, one is not here, so I don't know if that will work, if she's going to be back by Thursday, if that's something that would help clear the air on this, or if just having the discussion today and hearing from the council members that do sit on the board, if they see themselves going into the future, you know, then it will still continue to be an issue, and your concern of what state law actually allows them to be on the board and also serve on the council. So, I just wanted to throw that out there. If it's something that we can... In the composition of the CMP, I mean, from the outside, I have not sat as a council member on the CMP board, but, you know, it's going to change drastically, and the membership of the CMP won't be asked to be making so many big decisions.
Well, if I heard counsel correctly, did he not indicate that it was not a special district, so it's not relevant to the issue that Councilwoman Myers has brought up? Can I understand that?
I think it's a pretty fair assessment, Mr. President.
Okay. Any other comments regarding this? I'd like to hear comments from the members who are on the CMP regarding this issue, but you feel that you need to resign to... From the CMP as addressing this issue or not?
Can I just clarify? It wasn't resigned from CMP to address this issue. It was just, what do we intend as a council? Do we feel we're going to need council representation on the CMP? And I have not served, so I just wanted that to be out there for discussion.
And be a discussion for future.
Yeah.
Are there any other comments regarding this issue here? Yes. Audience, yes?
Yes, sir. I'm only rising to speak, because I have spoken to the CMP regarding the fact that I also believe there's a conflict when the City Council members sit and vote to approve a contract as members of the board, and then sit to ratify that contract. I requested at the time of the initial approval that the three City Council members recuse themselves so that they would be able to vote at this point, and it was a moot point at that point. But I do believe, along with Ms. Myers, that there is a bit of a conflict when you are the designer, you come up with the recommendation, and then you end up also being the ratifying body. There is an issue regarding the 501(c)(3) status and the instrumentality, that there's a very fine line we've had to walk. And I'm a bit surprised to find out at this point that we're not a special district, because that has been repeatedly used as the reason that certain things were done, that we had the right to, because we were a special district. So, it is a bit perplexing in this moment, and not having my files here to call up the exact moments. My only consideration to ask of you is that whatever language this contract has, that whatever the city has to have happen, be locked in in this contract. If you want to report on a weekly, monthly, bi-weekly matter, whatever, it should be in the contract and not left, because that becomes, again, subject to the board approval. And while three City Council members may currently be on there, I believe ultimately that you are going to have to look at the long-term relationship from legal standpoint. Thank you.
Thank you. The attorney has given us an opinion in determining the legitimacy of what we're about to vote on. If we have credence in his conclusion, you have to accept that in your mind. Councilwoman Myers has brought up a question as whether we should be pursuing this until we get further explanation. We have a motion to approve it on the second. So, are there any other comments about this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Poses?
Me.
Okay. Pass. I might suggest that if council will give us a point people on this, particularly at later dates. Wish your please.
Yes, Mr. President. I have an opinion on the dual office holding issue, and I'll have it scanned and emailed tomorrow, depending on what time we ceasefire tonight.
Thank you. Yes?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Vice President. Yeah, and I remember seeing that memo and being a board member, or, excuse me, a trustee member of the CMP. I've received that. I've gotten opinions from Mr. Messer and other staff members that it's okay for me to be a City Councilman and sit on the CMP, and so I've been satisfied. I don't really know what else to do. I don't feel conflicted. I don't really know what else to do. If my attorney's telling me that it's okay, I'm going to take his opinion and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Administrator?
Thank you, Mr. President. The next thing on the agenda is declaration and disposal of surplus city property, Montessori Drive. The recommendation is that City Council declare the city-owned property on Montessori Drive, Pensacola, Florida, as surplus, and authorize the mayor to dispose of the property to the highest bidder pursuant to an invitation to bid ITB.
Wish your pleasure.
Move to approve.
Have a second?
I'm going to second it, just to bring it to discussion. Thank you.
I've removed. Second, discussion? Councilwoman Mars? I'm sorry, Councilwoman DeWes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is in my district, and it's just so council understands, it's a city-owned portion of the old racket club, which was closed, I think, maybe a few months after I came on council and was bank-held, and the city had zero access to a majority of the property, and it was quite an eyesore. And it has finally sold, and this is a portion, Montessori School that's across the street, across Montessori Drive, has some of the portions of the buildings that were on the property, and this lies right in the middle of it, and is... The improvements to it are two tennis courts that are... The property is city-owned, but the tennis courts span the city property and the private property. So, it's a little bit of a complicated discussion to have. And I did note that the appraisal, although some that are interested in this property thought was quite high, the recommendation was actually in this market to highest and best uses office space, but it also recommended a hold strategy. So, when I asked why the minimum bid was put in there, it's basically because of that, because it protects the interest of the city of Pensacola, and that's why that number was put in, because when I read the different options that council can accept or decline, the value of the property being set was not traditionally a part of it, but that is in order. You know, and I do want to disclose, I have talked with two parties that are interested in this, and I know that they'll be interested in the bid process. It is not required that we, as council, keep that minimum portion in. But I do support that staying in, simply because the value has been established, and it's actually recommending that we hold the property. So, if we do have a bidder that is interested for market value, that's what we would consider at that time. And if that whole process fails, we can't do a license to use, because it's not right-of-way. I asked those questions as well. It would have to be a lease arrangement, so that would be the other thing that I wanted to let council know. I felt compelled to do a little bit of research and share it with you, since it is in my district.
Thank you so much. Any other comments from the audience? Yes?
Yeah, thank you very much. And I'm trying to... So, right now, we have a situation where we have an appraisal for $74,000, and that will be the... If we allow this to be bidded properly, that will be the minimal amount, the minimum amount that will be accepted as the way it stands now. Is that correct, Mr. Reynolds?
That's correct, Councilman Johnson, but that, of course, is subject to your determination.
Yeah, I think I'd like to amend, make an amended motion. And I've really... I've thought about this, too. Very familiar with the property. I know that I've been contacted by individuals, too. One party wanted to talk about putting a... Restarting part of the racket club, putting two tennis courts there. And I looked at the size of this piece of property, and it's apparent to me that this size will... This size of this property will not allow two tennis courts with proper setbacks, with other issues. I've got access concerns, these type of issues that I think that it will not be able to accommodate two tennis courts. I've also had people talk to me about this possibly being a home site. And I think there... We also have setback issues there that concern me. What I would really like to see happen with this piece of property, and put this to bed once and for all, is to put this property out on the market, have no minimum bid, and let all parties bid on this piece of property. Just change the one thing, that being no minimum bid. And let's get this thing put to bed. I also have a question about... I know that the Montessori School has also been interested in this property. Does anyone know if Montessori... If the school pays property taxes, has that ever been determined? I know that there... I've got some question about, do schools pay... Private schools pay property taxes? Is that... Do we know that, whether they do or don't?
I don't know the Florida regulations on that, Councilman. I don't know if the city attorney...
They do. I'm seeing a very knowledgeable gentleman there in the back. There, the distinguished-looking gentleman there, shaking his head, yes. So, they do pay. So, you know, to get this thing on the tax rolls, I mean, I'm ready to resolve this, one way or another. Whoever gets it is fine with me. You know, I think that the person is going to have to do... Whoever bids this and is... Awarded the bid for the highest bidder, I think that they're going to have to do diligence. And they're going to have to determine if the uses that they propose or would like for this property is even acceptable as far as setbacks, et cetera, et cetera. And I would also think that we would... If the highest bidder that is awarded, if they are unable to, I think there was a bid deposit that's going to be placed $4,000, and I think they had 60 days to complete this transaction and close. And if, for whatever reason, this highest bidder can't meet these, you know, very transparent requirements, that it goes to the second bidder. And I'd like to make an amended motion that we put this for bid, that we accept all terms, and that there is no minimum bid. That is my motion.
That's for a like a second. Okay. Back to the recommendation. Any comments? Any other comments? Comments from the audience? Yes, sir?
My name is Bob Switzer, and I know the property pretty well. I used to own it, and I recently sold it. And I sold it for half the price per square foot that the appraisal came in. So, as you are looking at the appraisal at $74,000, the property adjacent to it was sold at half that price on a square-foot basis. So, understanding this minimum bid against the appraisal is sort of out there. So, I sort of second Mr. Larry's bid.
Just unfortunate you can't second.
I know. So, I'm just telling you that the appraisal is, I think, out in left field.
Can we have some idea as to why this property was appraised so high? Mr. Switzer's indicating that he sold the property for half that much. Has something significant has happened since his sale that makes this property... Yeah?
Well, let me make... Clear that up. I think Mr. Switzer sold property adjacent to it, next door to it, that surrounds...
On a square-foot basis?
Yeah, on a square-foot basis. I think what the point he was trying to make is he owned the entire racket club, and that he sold off most of that racket club. I think this was this piece of property, the city-owned piece of property. It turned up in title search or whatever, that it actually belonged to the city. So, he's saying, I think, that this appraisal is twice what he recently sold the rest of the racket club. And wherever this ends up, I think that we, you know, it's time to put this thing out to bid, have no minimum bid, and let's get this on the tax rolls and get some kind of property taxes off of this. Thank you.
Let me ask a question about procedure. If, in fact, we would have accepted the recommendation that Councilperson Johnson brought forth, if it went to a certain real low bid, does this action come back before the council at all in terms of accepting some of it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other?
Yeah, I think there's another gentleman. My neighbor actually come up and spoke, said he'd like to speak to this issue.
Thank you.
I am the treasurer of the PTO at the school board, and the PTO is also interested in the Montessori School. And I'll speak to the appraisal. What I think of the appraisal and what happened also is, what I had seen is the appraisal was based on primary roads, you know, and this property is in the neighborhood, and it was based on office square footage. And the space and the square footage of the lot is not conducive to an office building. So, therefore, I also believe that it's overpriced, you know, somewhere in the $37,000 or less price would probably be more reasonable. Also, if it does not go out to bid, then it becomes an eyesore and a hazard to the children who are on that campus and may have access to that property. Because if it does not, and y'all just hold it, it sits there indefinitely deteriorating, becoming a more of a burden to you guys. So, we're pushing for it to be out to bid. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman DeWes?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did have one final question, because this appraisal, although it does seem high, I read it. I mean, I spent my life in this business, and I do look at the comparables, but this is a trusted appraiser, that the city staff has paid to do this appraisal. It has been presented by city staff, and there's a reason that the minimum bid was put in place based on the commentary and the appraisal. So, my question is, if this process, we approve it today, and we go through with it, and there's either no bids, because there's no responders, or they're below the minimum, what would the lease procedures be? Would it be put out for a request for proposal to lease the property to these interested parties, or anyone within 300...
parties, or anyone within 300 feet, I think, or is notified, and it's, it's noticed publicly? But what, what lease process would go into place if we just did a lease?
Can you respond to that?
At this point, the determination has been made to declare this a surplus property. If, at the end of the day, there are no applicable bids for this property, then we'll make a determination as to where to proceed from there.
Okay.
If, if there are no bids that are returned, that would be within the, the limits of whether it be under Councilman Johnson's proposal, or how it's written here, then we'll make a determination as to what to do with that surplus property then, at that point. But at this point, what we're coming forward with is the proposal to declare this surplus property, and then to sell it for a minimum, a minimum price bid of $74,000.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, all in favor of the recommendation? Aye.
Aye.
Posits? Pass them down. Next, Mr. Reynolds?
The next item on the agenda, Mr. President, is Escambia treating subject site acquisition of property for the proposed Palifax Industrial Park. The recommendation is that city council authorize the mayor to execute the agreement for sale and purchase of a 15-acre parcel of land to be conveyed from Escambia County to the city for $1 for inclusion in the Palifax Industrial Park.
Move to approve.
Second. Proper move to second. Questions? Comments? Counsel? Audience? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posits? Pass them down. Mr. Reynolds?
Mr. President, the next item on the agenda is proposed park and recreation facility naming or renaming guidelines and procedures. The recommendation is that city council approve the proposed naming and renaming guidelines and procedures developed by the Neighborhood Services Department and adopted by the Parks and Recreation Board.
Move to approve.
Second. Have a second? Second. Proper move to second. Comments?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Could you, I didn't see any underlining there, and maybe I overlooked it, but what's changed on here from what we had, what was proposed two weeks ago?
Thank you, Councilman Johnson, and for that, Mr. Flaherty is here to address that issue.
Thank you.
Councilmen, council members, I simply eliminated that one paragraph that spoke to council members not being eligible if they were in office, and employees not being eligible if they hadn't been retired for at least four years. I just took that out. So. And I'd be happy to go through this and give you a quick review on this, because it really is not very complicated at all, and-
Well, I think the issue that really was up for discussion was that tenure of time that, of eligibility, and if you indicated you took that out, unless someone else has any other issues, I don't think you need to-
Okay.
-go in over the rest of it. Councilman Gerald?
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Vice President, I did have one question, and I didn't see it yet. And you mentioned something having been taken out, but that paragraph or, or line that read that, as a council, we would not name structures, streets, et cetera, after living individuals, was that removed from the consideration?
Councilman, I, I did not see that line, nor do, nor is it in this particular proposal to you today. I, I wasn't even sure, quite honestly, that it was in the proposal that we presented originally to you.
Okay, I may have been dreaming at the time. Well, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Is that in there?
No, it is not, it is not in here.
Okay, any other, Councilwoman Morris?
Could you read what you took out? Did, can-
I apologize, I do not have that with me. But it was a second, I can paraphrase what it was.
Okay.
Yeah, it simply said that if you were a council member, you could not be, a facility could not, not be named after you if you were still a sitting council member. If you were no longer a sitting council member, then you could have a facility named after you. There was, and there was no specific timeline to that. It, it may have read just a little bit confusing. What it went on to say then was that if you were a city employee-
Mm-hmm.
-you had to be retired from the city for at least four years before your name could be put on a facility, if, in fact, that was recommended.
Okay, so this, this would allow a sitting council person to have a facility named after-
That's correct.
After him or her?
Yes, it would. And, and, council members, the, the authority for actually naming a facility has always been with you, and it still is with you. You are the final authority. We simply wanted to inject a couple of procedural stops, and they were a letter to the advisory board, a review by the advisory board, and then a recommendation to the council.
Okay. Thank you. Well, I'm not going to support that change, because I think that I just have a problem with naming facilities after sitting council persons. I think that leads to a lot of problems, conflicts of interest, opportunism. I, I don't like it. I think it was in there for a good reason, and I won't support that.
I'll make a friendly amendment to my motion, that the four-year portion that we discussed last meeting, and not our COW meeting, but our council meeting, that was the, the issue that was brought up, was the four years, and that's the way the motion was actually written, and that we didn't discuss or address the actual being in office. So I will return that. I have, as it reads here, the original paragraph, parks may be named for individuals or groups that have made an exceptional contribution to the city of Pensacola. And then there's a paragraph that, that, just beyond that, elected city of Pensacola officials, city of Pensacola council members, and currently employed city staff shall not be eligible for consideration until no longer in office or retired from city service, period. So we would leave out for a, at least four years, because that was the one of greatest concern to each council member that spoke up at the committee of the, I mean, the council meeting, excuse me. So. My motion is that we actually leave that portion in, and just take the end of the sentence off for at least four years.
I can support that, that, that motion.
You were my second, Maria.
Yeah, well, I don't support that change. I want to keep it the way that Mr. Flaherty has indicated, because I am determined to move forward. I've served the council and the citizens of District 5 for the past 12 years, and I have no intentions of supporting that change. I'd like to see it the way it is. I don't think it's opportunism, nor do I feel it's inappropriate. I was watching a program the other day, and I was watching the Buckley Building over in Escambia County, and to put a restriction in there that, that would cause difficulty, I would not be able to support that. I think that, I have questions to begin with, why we send it to the recreation board to review and screen, and then make a decision and come back to us. And it's almost the way we were doing business with the code enforcement board, where we're asking someone else to tell us what to do. I think we're a council, and we ought to be able to make that decision. But I won't tamper with that part of the procedure. But I, I am satisfied with the recommendations that Mr. Flaherty has brought forward today, because it's something that we can say, let's leave them out, let's give them four years, blah, 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 blah. And we're beginning to sort of play with it in a way that, that, to me, is unproductive. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Wu?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Point of order, there's no longer a motion on the floor. He withdrew his second, so someone needs to second it if we want to keep discussing it.
Okay, then we have a second, okay, well, then we have a second on the recommendation.
No, he withdrew his second on that, that's what I'm saying, is I made motion, and Councilman Gerald seconded it.
Well, we needed a motion on the recommendation that was brought forth by Mr. Reynolds. Did we have a motion on, we had a motion and second on that, did we not?
Yes, we did.
Okay, so he's just not, he's not-
I'm not supporting the amendment. But the motion apparently still stands, but I did not support the amendment.
That's what Councilwoman Dewis, but you, but the thing that's on the floor now is the recommendation.
Well, if there's a second on the amendment, though.
But you didn't have, you didn't have a second.
He withdrew his second, but you didn't ask if there was one.
I will second the amendment.
Say what? What is-
I said I will second the amendment. I don't have a-
I have the wording in front of me. No, he didn't ask for it. No, he didn't ask.
I said I would support it.
Okay, we have an amendment that, and the, would you cite what the motion, the amendment is?
The amendment is to include the paragraph that was originally included, because I want to go back to, the motion I made at the council meeting was only to remove the words for at least four years, because we had a rather lengthy discussion, and that was the only thing that was brought up. And then I said, please make any other changes you'd like to make by communicating with staff. So, the whole paragraph was removed, and I, that wasn't intended. The wording is elected city of Pensacola officials, city of Pensacola council members, and currently employed city staff shall not be eligible for consideration until no longer in office or retired from service, period. We are removing the portion of four, at least four years, which was the rest of that sentence. So that was my amended motion.
And you second it?
I second it.
Okay, now, let's have a discussion on that. Yes, Wu.
I, I like that amendment for the following reason. The difficulty you have when somebody is a sitting council member is you're sitting here with colleagues and friends. And I've already heard people lining up and saying what they would like named after them. I've heard, you know, two things named, and possibly, you know, from there, where do we, it seems to me we're getting an awfully slippery slope. I'm in favor of doing it as soon as the person's retired, or no longer on the council. I don't see the need of waiting four years. But to me, it seems like, if, if we're getting into this business of naming things after ourselves, it just seems like an awfully slippery slope. You can imagine in the school system, you know, school board members starting to look around for buildings to name after themselves, or people in ECUA thinking of what facilities they'd like to name after themselves. And what makes it so difficult is then, when you're serving with that person, I mean, good gracious, when they talked about Councilman Townsend having something named after him, and I'm thinking, they're, they're going to put me right between the rock and hard place. A person that I have an awful lot of admiration for, a person that I consider a dear friend, then Councilman Gerald said that there was something that he'd like. And I think, well, gosh, he, he's a friend also. And I just don't like being put in that position, and I, and I don't think it looks good to the public. The public says, my goodness, you're down here to do our work, and you're down here naming buildings after yourselves. So I, I, I think Councilwoman Dewis has given us very wise counsel. The person leaves, is off the council, and then is not being influenced by friendships or whatever, and I can live with it, so I will support that amendment. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other comments?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
I think that Councilman Wu brings up an extremely important and valid point. You know, if a city council person is, you know, up for having something named after them, and, you know, I could get calls from my constituents who say, look, I don't want that named after that person for this reason or that reason, then it puts me in the position, I don't want to offend my colleague, but at the same time, I have to be responsive to my constituents first. And I, and I don't want to be put in that position either. I mean, I, I've already had people comment to me about naming the tennis courts after Councilman Townsend. Well, why don't we name it after Marie Young? I mean, she, and I think you even brought, brought up her contribution to that. So I think it puts us in a real awkward position, and I don't, and I will tell you, if it passes, I will not be voting for, for a person who's sitting on city council to have a facility named after them, regardless of who that person is. I think, I think it's just not a good policy, and I, I see a lot of problems with it, and I won't be supporting it. But I will support the amendment, because I don't think a person should have to wait to have something named after them. And I see no good reason to have a waiting period. So I will be supporting the amendment.
Councilman Gerald?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, Vice President. You know, we're making something out of nothing. We've asked Mr. Flaherty to modify the, the procedure. And now we're saying, we don't want to do it this way. Why don't we just not name anything after anybody, if it takes this much? You know, who do we name things after? This is a pattern that's gone on throughout this city for years and years. I wonder if there was such a debate to name Lee Square, for example. Was that such a debate, was it because he was not a, a living person, or not a sitting council member? And we're, we're mulling over something. My recommendation would be to not name anything after anybody, forevermore. If it gets this difficult, and, you know, difficulty in sitting with council members, well, why this and why that? You know, the names in this building, we should all just change them and just say City Hall, and cut out the foolishness. But in any case, I'd like to call the question, and then we go ahead and vote and get it over with. And whatever you do is fine with me.
Second. I don't even know what the question is, but I'll second it.
Well, Mr. Johnson, you started this when you came in here with the tennis courts.
All right, so, the whole discussion, are we voting on the amendment that-
What's the amendment, please?
The amendment is that we, it's that we, we cannot name any parks or building, et cetera, after a city council person while they are in office. What was deleted was the four-year wait, waiting period, and that's what we're, we're voting on with the, all the other policies that, that are stipulated in, in the policy agreement. So-
So we're throwing that back in, and everything is, okay.
Well, what was deleted was the four-year wait. But you cannot name the tennis court after Ronald Townsend, okay? Right now. You gotta wait till I leave, and then name it after me, since I'm just giving you an example. All right.
I can go with that.
All those, all those in favor of the amendment, please raise your hand. Posits? All right. Can we go ahead on to the next?
Yeah, well, just one comment, brief comment. I can go along with it, under the circumstances, I see where this is going. But I can live with that. In fact, I can live with most decisions. Thank you.
Yes.
I thought you were going to say that the amendment was, you have to be dead before you get something named after you. Thank you.
No, that wasn't included. It was oversight. Mr. Reynolds?
That is all for Mayor's communications and acts, and actions, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. We have, there are no attorneys, communication, or action, that's it. When is this meeting conflict?
Bill, is it May 21st, the next conflict resolution being? I guess the answer is I can get back to you this afternoon. I think it's May 21st, but, uh, March. Is it March, yeah? March 21st, about there.
Okay, March.
Oh, yeah.
All right. Okay, we'll, we got some discussion items, but can we have a report on the executive staff committee on the council executive recruitment?
To the three councilmen.
Huh?
No, I'm just laughing at our-
Yeah, do we have anything on that, Mr. Reynolds? Let you know-
Nothing that I'm aware of, Mr. President. Staff has put together a timeline that I sent out this weekend to all council people in regards to this particular issue, and as always, whenever this comes before- And as always, whenever this comes before us, I will simply state that staff stands by to assist.
I know the Human Resource Director had proposed that the committee would meet and submit the top three and for some reason we couldn't get that accomplished. I know one committee member had suggested that possibly do an outside agency to do the screening, et cetera, but would suggest that we try to respond to the Human Resource Manager and let's go ahead on and finalize whatever we're going to do if the committee will, will do that. And I don't know how many she has, but from what I can understand, she has Councilwoman Pratt, does not have mine, and I don't know about you, Councilwoman, you're the one that suggested that we go to outside agency. And I don't know about Councilman Gerald, but my thoughts are we need to close this chapter as soon as possible. Yes?
And I, I made sure that my choices as a committee member included the opportunity to actually choose not to name any of the individuals that were remaining. No offense to them, but to call them the top remaining individuals is a little bit, perhaps misleading. When I look at those names compared to where we were, how the committee ranked the first round and second round of individuals. So, I just suggested, once I received the, the clearance, that I did not have to choose from the list. I said, let's look at one of our city employment agencies that's under contract with us. Let them do the heavy lifting, so to speak. We list our qualifications in terms of skill set and take the politics out of it and get, get a workhorse or two workhorses here. And that was my recommendation as a committee member.
Okay, well, as a committee, we have not discussed that. I would suggest that maybe the committee needs to discuss that. And then if we vote in the committee and make the recommendation back, that would be what I would want to do.
And I didn't, I didn't mean to say spill the beans, but I also feel compelled to let those noncommittee members know that we, we feel the, the pressure. And so that was, for me, an, an action mode sort of move on my part.
It was noted that we spent approximately 14K, I believe, up to this point and this process. I would hope that between now and our next committee, whole week and final, committee members, that we could finalize this and either do what has been suggested here or either that we come forward with a recommendation. I didn't feel, I thought we had some adequate candidates in there to do what we want to do. I looked at them and I had ranked and rated them also based on what I thought was a pretty good rating scheme. So, we need to get that committee and meet back with the Human Resource Director if we possibly can. Okay. Yes, sir.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Vice President. I repeatedly remind you folks of the fact that, and I sometimes refer to myself as a retired educator. I'm not a retired education, educator. I retired from teaching with the Scamby School District. I'll never be a retired educator. I will continue to educate. Now, here's what I did. I looked back at our committee structure. And where I'm going with this is how the job description should have been developed. And when I went over the committee structure as to the responsibilities that one could put into place for the council executive, I noticed personally that there is a disconnect in what we're asking that person or persons to do and what is, what are the actual duties will be. And those actual duties will reflect the needs of council members. There were five committees in your little, your little book. And as a committee, what we, and the council is, apparently what we failed to do was to tie in the job description with the responsibilities and the duties of council members as they relate to the legislative duties of council members, as they relate to the kind of person we were seeking, person or persons. And if, I would encourage the committee members to go back and take a look at that because in the job description, we've mentioned some things that were just out in left field as it relates to what, what background information, the services that the council would need for those, that, those individuals, individual or individuals, what they would actually be doing, the research that they would have to do, the background that they would have to have. And I think we sort of missed that. I missed it as well until I went and took a look at it. And that is a function of what educators do. In order for me to get up and say something, I better darn well know, like, I guess like attorneys, preachers and others, you better review your material before you start talking. And once I went and looked back and I said, wait a minute, we pulled the plug. And we've described some things that are aside from what we really need. So before we move forward on this, we need to go back and look at what the duties would actually be, not some things that we just sort of, of, are put together and say, here's the job description, this is what we're looking for. If you will go back and look on page, this is something, folks, you have to read more than once to get a full understanding of what's going on here. I mark on my pages, I highlight and I fold them and, you know what page that is?
Can I add something while you're looking that up?
Sure. I'm looking under the committee system.
He said I could speak while he's looking this up.
Yes, go ahead.
I did want to remind council that those committees still exist. They are simply by choice of council not being convened because of the logistics of each person having to communicate and approve that portion of the agenda and try to get the agenda out in a timely manner. So it was a logical decision to not have the committee structure convene. It is still part of our, our rules and procedures. They are still in existence and I think it's a wonderful idea to tie job description and duties to that and possibly even have chairs of those committees, once we have a staff person in place, because it will give better structure and more direction to the person that we would eventually hire and accountability on a certain level. And we wouldn't have nine council members talking about every single issue. You'd have a champion of each issue. So I agree, that's a good way to explain because I know even Scotty Davis, who was highly qualified and obviously well-liked by all of us, said, you know, there is a concern about what exactly it is I'll be doing for you because it was hard to define. It was hard to quantify. And I think it'd be great to tie it back to our committee system.
Thank you, Mr. Dewis. And that was where I was going next. We need to look back at that we suspended. We didn't abolish them altogether. We suspended the committee systems. But as you indicated, where we have nine people discussing everything on here, that's what's causing us to have the problems that we think we're having because we have difficulty identifying who's who. And in number A, letter A actually, it explains what the finance committee does, it explains the enterprise operations, neighborhood services, economic and community development, and then the committee of the whole comes together. But we missed a step. We, we set aside the committee structure. Now we know how it worked in actuality. And as you indicated, perhaps a chairman or someone within those committees will bring us back to where we're supposed to be, where we need to be. And in order to be effective, that's what we're going to have to do. We have to look back and say, wait a minute, we changed it, look how it's working. We better back up and get this thing right. And that will give us the chance. And as I sat there and I was grateful for all the rain that we had over the weekend, it gave me a good chance to sit back and just actually read this stuff and digest it.
Are we suggesting that we disband the committee that we have here? Or is that what you're all suggesting?
No, 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 no. We, if, if everybody gets on the same page and read this information, then we would have a better understanding of what we're looking for in the first place. Because that job description is disconnected from this, from the roles and expectations.
Could we possibly go back as a committee and discuss the concerns that you brought forth? And if in fact the committee can come forth with a legitimate job description that equates to what you consider as, as relevant to what we should be doing?
I am willing to do that.
Could we do that rather than bring the committee here as a committee as a whole? How my personal would be, let's, let's get this committee back and let's do it there. Okay?
Now, with our instructions, I would, I can agree with that.
Okay, yes.
Yeah, I, I agree that the committee should not be disbanded, but should go forward with Councilman Gerald's, I think, excellent suggestion. And then Councilman Spencer had an excellent suggestion too. You know, it might save us a lot, one, once we get that person's job description right of hiring an outside employment agency to, to do the work of finding, finding that person. But anyway, I'm not on the committee.
The committee, I think, could we do that in the committee? Well, that might be a recommendation that we bring forth to, okay?
Yeah, yeah, but I'm just saying, I, I'm not on the committee. I'm just giving my thoughts.
Can we move on? Did you have something that, Mr. Reynolds, that you needed to say on that?
Well, Mr. President, I, I just, I wanted to remind the committee of the whole that we have a job description that was approved. And so essentially what we're going to go back then is to, I guess, go back to square one. And I just want to make sure that that's the intent of this organization.
No, I didn't have any problem with the position description because I rated them based on, we had a length of discussion in the committee about what we wanted this person to do and then the job description was developed. And that's what we put in, in the RFP, then in the announcement, and this is what those folks responded to, given their experience as it relates to what we had asked for. So my thoughts are that we look at what we got there. If there's some deviation from what Councilman Gerald is suggesting, we can add to or delete or whatever. But I don't want to go back to square one. I don't think any of us want to go back to square one. We've been dilly-dallying with this thing for some time. So, i- if we could, if we could shut it down, the conversation right here now, and we got that, we don't want you doing another position description. That's a foundation for where I'm coming from. And then based on what Councilmember Gerald stipulated, we look at that. If there's a big deviation, or everybody can make a comment, and we, we need to announce our meeting and folks can come in and provide their input, and then we'll have deliberation on it and bring you back a recommendation. That's what I like, see if we can do that. So can we do that?
Yes, sir. You can do whatever this body decides it wants to do on this issue.
Thank you. All right. Time and date for strategic plan review. You know, we talked about having a half a day or whatever to deal with some of those strategic plans. What, what's your thoughts on that? We did have a basic document that, that I think that we did sometime back. I don't know whether any of the new council members were part of it or not. I think all of us were involved in that, but I don't know who asked for this, but, oh, okay, okay, what you, Gerald, what you?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. What I'd like to do is have hard copies to write it, provided to all members of council. It is important that we take a look at those strategic plans to see which goals we accomplished and the ones that we did not accomplish that may be still a work in progress. But I think a clear review of those strategic plans and those goals will give us the opportunity to look at what we are doing from, on the legislative side. It will clear up, in my mind and hopefully in the minds of others, it will clear up what appears to be a misunderstanding of who has the authority to do what. It is necessary simply because when we did the strategic plans, we were under the old charter. We are now under a new charter. We need to review what has happened and what we would like to see happen. And this helps us to clearly understand our legislative role. And we will see, I can guarantee you, once we do this, we will see that the strategic plans that we put in place and the things that we said we wanted to see happen in this city are currently happening. The disconnect occurs when we look at who's doing what. And I think that it will help the mayor's office understand their role and understand what authorities that the, the charter has moved over exclusively to the mayor. And that's what needs to be cleared up. Because when we did the strategic plan, we did it under the old charter to look at what we've done and look at what we're doing. And when we make new strategic plans, we will be able to make those plans so that we're on the side of the fence that we need to be on. And in, in reality, folks, I can tell you, many of those plans that were, were designed in '07, '09, the mayor has the authority to do those things and that's what he's doing. And I think the disconnect occurs when we want to look at authority. But we had designed those plans and in that case, it would have been the city manager responsible, but under the strong mayor process, the mayor has many of the responsibilities for carrying out the strategic plan that we set. And that's what he's doing. And we send, we tend to spend a lot of time bickering and going back and forth about whether or not he had to, the authority to do so. And I think to look back and to refocus will give us the opportunity to understand all roles in the legislative realm. And the mayor can carry out his duties without a lot of barking and, and scratching and, and asking for clarification. He'll set his goals, he'll present them to us, we'll have our goals, we'll present them to him. And it creates a better working relationship. Thank you.
Yes.
Yes, and after Councilman Gerald's mentioned that we should revisit that strategic plan, especially those of us that weren't involved as council members at the time, I did ask our city clerk to point me in the direction of that. And I suggest to all of you, she did that for me about three weeks ago. I mean, it was easy to navigate too, but she basically dropped it in my inbox. So, I, I think it would be good if Erica would just do that for all council members. And I was happy to see there was definitely a, more of a line of continuity that would define what, again, those goals were in that strategic planning session and where we are today. It was a comforting reality check.
That's one of the majors.
Yes, I definitely want to follow through with Councilman Gerald's suggestions that we have a session, but I think it would really help if we had a staff person to assist us in having that type of, of meeting because I would think there would be information that needs to be gathered and, so I think it's a good idea, but I think that we desperately need a staff person to help us do that. So I, to, to me, that's my top priority right now is getting a staff person to help us facilitate that type of meeting.
In the interim, I haven't had any problem with Mrs. Major assisting us on anything that I've, I've asked her for. It would appear to me that we just need somebody to facilitate the meeting and the president couldn't facilitate the meeting and we can get the document and go forth. I really don't see the need to wait till we hire a staff person to have this meeting because I think we got the basic document. We know what we're trying to accomplish and we just go forth. And I don't foresee the mayor would deny us for the use of Mrs. Mayor, Mayor, Major to, to assist us in this process.
She'd be a good person. Yeah, I mean, if she's willing to do it.
I just wanted to clarify or get clarification actually on what we're actually going to be doing. Are we reaffirming what is already in place and then adding our suggestions to it for discussion? Are we going through and going through everything that we had in place that's there? I assume that once that's approved and standing, unless there's something that the new council members wanted to add to those strategic goals or if someone on council wants to remove a strategic goal, but that we're reaffirming what's in place and adding our ideas? Is that where we're headed?
I got the impression that we're looking at what we have based on the, to be consistent with the new charter to ensure that there's some clarification on what is being, we're doing what to whom and any other specifics as it relates to. The mayor has some goals, we have some goals, we ought to make sure that they are consistent. That's, that's what I thought we were doing because when we developed that project, we were the, whatever, the Cowboys, if you will. Now we have other folks involved. So, if in fact, we could set a time and maybe we'll ask, if it's agreeable, ask the Mrs. Major to contact everybody to determine when is the best time to do that and see if we can have some consistency. We'll announce it and if we have to block out two hours, three hours, whatever the case may be, and get it done. Can, can we do it that way?
Let me, let me make a comment.
Okay, Councilman Wu?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Just an observation. We're in the process of getting somebody to work with us. And it seems to me, if we had this meeting where we made all these goals and objectives, absent that person who we're going to look at as the point person to help us get this all accomplished, in my mind, it would appear to be more objective to have that person sitting in the room so they can see where we are and where we would like to go, rather than bringing that person up to speed afterwards. But that's just one person's thoughts.
Thank you.
If I, if I may, let me just remind us of how we did it. And this may be something for the mayor's office, because we did hire an outside facilitator, if you folks recall, Dr. Lee, I believe it was. It was Dr. Lee who was the outside facilitator, and I'm not sure what his fee was for his work. We did have some staff present, but the staff that was there that day was there to do the documentation, the writing of the things that we said. It took us an entire day to get through that process and to get something down. It doesn't require the staff person that we're talking about, because these things, to me, are crystal clear as to what their role will become or what their role will be. The thing that we need to do, if, if we need to hire an outside facilitator to guide us or to walk us through the process, to collect that data, to arrange it, the same as we did, we're going to do the same thing we did before. We put a thing on the board, you remember? Put some paper on the board. We write down our ideas, we talk about them, we talked about the feasibility, who would be responsible. We had to define all of those things. That was the process that we used to help us to come to the, the strategic plan. And I would suggest that we use the same or a similar process. And the, the staff person or persons that we're talking about, they will come along later. Because by then, the goals and objectives will already be identified and, and documented. So, the process of bringing in a facilitator, a different one this time, to lead this strategic planning session, will be essential as far as success is concerned. And there are seven of you in here that remember, I hope you remember what we did. And we'll just do it again. And then that way, we can work this thing out. But some of you seem to have misplaced that experience. But that's what worked for us then, and I believe it would work now, to get a facilitator to, to walk us through the process. And then we'll regurgitate our thoughts and ideas about where we want to go with the city from a legislative point of view, under the new charter.
Also, a budgetary point of view, because that's part of our function, too, legislative and budgetary. I'll make a motion that we hire a facilitator to facilitate this meeting.
Second? Discussion.
Moving second that we hire facilitator to discuss this meeting. Discussion, yes.
You know, I'm, I'm sure most of us convened right now have participated in similar idea exchange settings, seminars, meetings through either our private sector work, the public education system, whatever. And I certainly appreciate the, the value of those facilitators. But I'm just, I'm, I'm thinking back, and I'm not at all discounting, again, the strategic plan that was created prior to being on council. What I thought was instructive for me was to refer to it, review it, and see as we crossed this sort of threshold into this new form of government, how, where have we been steered? Where, where did the council drive itself? And then now, under this new form of government, you know, who, what direction will we continue to go, again, under the, basically, the authority of, of a, of a mayor versus a manager form of government? And the, I just have to offer this, I can't see the same sort of meeting being necessary, and I would say that, or the facilitator. At that time, there was a, there was a Tom Bondfield, there was an Al Koby, and I, and I put names with it just because we were a different form of government, and that city manager needed complete direction from the council. Those city managers were not policymakers, or, they, they certainly were vitally important for running the mechanics of our city. But I just don't want us, and, and Councilman Gerald's, what I'm, I'm trying to point out is I don't want us to think that it is the same day and that the same setting then means that what we set is certainly, has the, the same, it's not the same instrument, in, in my opinion. And, and not at all discounting the value of our opinions. I think it's a, it's a great opportunity for us to be in the sunshine and to have that interchange, and there's no substitute for it. But I do want to remind fellow council members that I see a distinct difference in what that product, in terms of kind of how that product is used today in this new form of government. It certainly helps us all see where we stand with one another, but from that point on, I'm, I'm not...
I don't want to have to invoke the rule of, talking twice, just a minute. Because I think we, we're lingering on this particular topic too long. But I'm going to have to agree, I just don't see a need for us a facilitator for this particular meeting, which we're trying to accomplish. We got a new, I call it a ballgame, if you will. And we can develop, I believe, with the guidance of the president being the facilitator, and everybody can voice their opinion and put it down. I just don't see a need for a facilitator. Okay, this is going to be the last discussion on this.
And I, I, thank you, Mr. Vice President. I wanted to point out to Mr. Spencer that he is absolutely correct. This is a totally new ballgame. And the type of facilitator that we will need will be totally new. And that facilitator, I would like to have familiar with this document. Therefore, we know going in, and I might have said it at least three or four times today, we know that this is going to be a different, it is a different day. It will be a different approach, and we will handle it in a different manner. With the responsibility for, uh, duties and, and the day-to-day operation, those things will need to be guided so that we don't even dip into that bucket. And a facilitator of some sort would not be a bad idea. But if there, if the, the committee is leaning not toward a facilitator, as long as we have someone there to keep the record, and obviously, this meeting will be open to the public, there may be comments or things that they would, might like to say as well, or at least bring to the table. But if you feel that a facilitator is not needed, then we, we may not need them. Matter of fact, and since I've been thinking about it, I was thinking of a facilitator myself. One of my, I guess it's appropriate to say, one of my old professors might be the person that could walk us through this, from the University of West Florida.
Are we done?
I'm done.
Okay, did we have a motion to this?
Yes, we did.
What was the motion?
I made a motion, and Councilman Gerald seconded it. That we hire a facilitator.
Okay.
Or we could get one for free. But, anyway, that we have a facilitator.
A grad student.
Motion was that we have a, a meeting and that we hire a facilitator at a given date. All in favor of that, please raise your hand.
Aye.
Proposees?
I didn't vote yes and no, I voted no.
Where, where are we on this subject now? Do you, do you, do you want to have a meeting or not?
Yes, do want to have a meeting.
Okay, well, if, if there's no objection, I'm going to suggest to the president that we try to arrange a date and, and have a meeting, and then we go from there. Okay? Thank you. Vacant land management, who suggested that?
Mr. President, this was, uh, Councilman Spencer had requested this.
Councilman Spencer?
I'm sure I have a very energetic, enthusiastic crowd for this brief, very brief presentation. Again, this is very brief, and understanding how our form of government works, what I am simply doing is introducing an idea that I hope that then we can put in front of our mayor and the administration. And perhaps it will gain some traction. But certainly, we have an opportunity to weigh in, just again, in concept, on an idea that is, falls under the category of neighborhood redevelopment. Called Philadelphia Green, in the city of Philadelphia, it's a program that's basically under the umbrella of the Pennsylvania Horticultural Society. And the Philadelphia Green Program works with community-based organizations and, and city agencies. So, there's, there's a partnership that involves the city to transform vacant land to neighborhood assets. And most importantly is, I think that what differentiates this from what is currently, we may say, is, is a, a level of acceptability through the enforcement of maintenance of vacant lots through, again, our, our code enforcement, and now some of our, I think, even more strongly regulated fines and notices. But the difference is that this takes this to another level, giving us an opportunity to improve those maintained abandoned lots and transforming them to neighborhood assets. So, again, raising property values, raising community pride. And so, I suggest that we, as a city, can explore this successful program that is, again, vacant land management. There are, there's the Land Management Manual and videos, et cetera. But imagine there being some properties that just are perpetually sort of caught in this, no pun intended, but no man's land, where we could, again, the city can mow them and mow them, but then someone eventually pays fines. But that's sort of where they're stuck forever. What this Philadelphia Green Project has done, and I'm going to see if I can find another example. Chris, did we have? Right here. I had another site. And it's not showing up. Okay. There we go. Anyway, what you'll see is this, this program has allowed, again, taking some of these properties that were just vacant, and basically, we would indicate or signify them as being worthy of becoming pocket parks or community gardens. And maybe they have just a temporary, a new shelf life of 15 years. But we adopt the certain guidelines, like, for instance, with split rail fencing, and even in some cases where we may back up to vacant abandoned windowless buildings, murals, et cetera. Was hoping I had, again, there we go, there's the one with the split rail fence. But there was the corner lot, and while the city may be able to properly, again, maintain it by periodically removing debris and mowing it, this program allows us to begin to designate some of these, while we would not own them, but we basically take stewardship of them with partnerships with individuals. And there, it has even gone so far as to create a seasonal employment opportunity where, for instance, we are able to use workforce, underemployed workforce, tap into that potential in individuals. And they learn from it, they're also compensated, and the community benefits. But that's, that's, it's, it's an introduction. Yes?
You know, Mr. Spencer, that is, I, this is ironic, that there was, one of the goals and objectives that we talked about on the strategic plan was beautification. What you're introducing now is an excellent idea and something to certainly bring to the table, to help us better understand and to move forward. If we didn't accomplish all of those goals that were related to beautification, this strategic planning session and putting things on the table in your presentation will help us to understand how to get to where we're trying to go. And that would be, that's an excellent program. And I think we're all, we unanimously agreed that we are concerned about the beautification of our city, we're concerned about attracting people, families to move here and to, and establish relationships with our city. And that would be an excellent program to bring forward. And that's one of the things that we may not have accomplished to the level that we want to, although the mayor still has a beautification program going, the STEP program sort of renamed and still working. But those are the kinds of things that we, as a council, can identify and discuss and to put in place and to continue to push forward under that strategic plan. And then we would have a way that we could monitor it and make sure that we're making progress. I think that would be an excellent idea to bring forth, and we can discuss it and push it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
I really want to thank you for bringing this up. I love the idea. And I, I look around at District Two, and a particular abandoned site on the corner of Ninth Avenue and Creighton Road was a little service station that was so badly beaten up by Ivan. It never opened. And it just sat there with this horrible building until recently, and it was demolished. And it's a very small lot, but it's in a critical location because everybody sees it. I don't know who's ever going to buy it and do anything with it. But that would be a great place to have a green space in partnership with the owners of the property. But, anyway, I like the idea, and I'm going to go to that website. And how do I find it? Just Google it?
Just put vacant land management, and you will have several access links to it. Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Yes, and we have one more.
I just wanted to add how excited I am to see this. I know that when we, before you came on council, when we were talking about the community garden in the Hollis Williams Greenway, Ms. Helen Gibson said, put on the brakes, because I already started talking about where else can we do this? How can we, in the food deserts that we have within our community, if it's city-owned vacant property, how can we grow something there? How can we get going? This gives a roadmap to that, and it's a proven project in Philadelphia. And I know there's other cities because I had looked at it as well. So, I'm, I'm in complete support of trying to do this. And I don't know how we, as a council, can move this forward along with our complete streets, some of those strategic things. And I don't know that it needs to wait for the strategic planning session, because this is something that we could say, Mr. Mayor, we approve this and want to move forward. So, I appreciate you doing the research on it.
All right. Thanks for letting me present it. Thank you.
Well, I probably feel just the opposite, because they're going to be, and I, I didn't get a clear understanding. I like to read the document, because there's going to be an impact on specific ownership. I heard you say ownership, partnership. And I don't want to be talking about a possibility of taking someone's land and doing these kind of things. So, I'd like to read it, but, but I, I wouldn't want to say it has the blessing of this council and send it to the mayor and tell him to, to...
No, I'm, I'm certainly, I'm not looking to achieve that right now, Mr. Vice President. But I, and, and, but I'm inviting all of you individually to learn more about the program. And it is not, it is not a property ownership transition program at all. It's, it really, it's, Councilman Myers pointed out exactly what it does, is it, it provides a vehicle and a program to take certain properties that, and when I say take, I mean, control or repurpose them for some period of time, because we know that there is a better temporary use. And most importantly, it, it shows that we're a city that cares, because you can create these programs and... that cares because you can create these programs and just maintain the properties beyond a level of just cutting the grass or cutting the weeds.
Yeah, uh, seemed like excellent program, but there are some questions that I really would have-
Certainly, I'm sure.
On dealing with eminent domain and these kind of things, so-
Right.
Okay, we have a question from the audience on, on this, please.
I know this will probably shock Councilman Spencer, but I, I'm very grateful for him to bring, for having brought this forward. This is exactly the kind of actions that I believe we immediately need to start doing in Pensacola. I've worked in Main Street communities, which focused on trying to rejuvenate older communities, and most of the effort that you can get for the cheapest bang for your buck is to clean up your vacant spaces, have your vacant buildings, have nice displays in the windows, curtains on the top floors, lights that go on through the night in commercial areas, keep areas mowed, plant little corner pockets of color, and, you know, stick a birdbath here or a bench there. Not a lot of cost, but big bang in terms of the walking effect that you have. And the corridor plan that was developed for Belmont de Villiers post-Ivan was exactly that kind of thing. So, if you go back to all of the plans that for years have been in place here, what Councilman Spencer was talking about is the updated version of doing what should have been done all along, and I really encourage you to look at it. I'm not saying eminent domain either. I, I have a great concern on gentrification and loss of the, what I call the historical people of a community, but you have to realize we have a lot of property that have cloudy titles that no one can do anything with, or that have absentee or ill landowners, and if we can work out partnerships and arrangements where those properties can become usable to the community until such time as they are settled out, it really does impact everyone's property to the positive. So, I would be glad to work on anything with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to support Councilman Spencer's proposal, and I wanted to point out there are multiple groups in the community that are already working on projects like this. The one specific one I can mention, the Manah Food Bank, has a community garden on Government Street. I just spoke with another group today, and I don't have the information, but they are getting ready to start a community garden, and this is a totally disconnected group from Manah, starting a community garden adjacent to one of the housing projects. So, there are already groups in the community that are getting started on this, and if we could work together with the city to promote this idea, there's a lot of interest in the community for doing just that, and I think it would really take off. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to make my position clear. I don't oppose it, but you gotta be sensitive to when you start talking about managing folks' property, uh, just an issue that they will really be highly suspicious. Thank you, but thank you so much, Congressman Spencer, for bringing that forward.
All right.
Okay, um, we have the consent agenda items, and I think all of the items were approved unanimously, were they not?
Items four and seven.
Item three and seven?
Four.
Four and seven were not, but so, that would be three, one, two, three, five, and six would be, and, okay? All right.
We have to approve.
Second. Probably move in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, we have the information item regarding the disparate study, and I do know that they had a meeting here last week, a, a public meeting dealing with the disparate study. Council, uh, Member Gerald was in attendance, uh, I was in attendance, and we had some real good information from the, the public. Do we need to say anything else about that, Mr. Reynolds?
No, sir.
Okay, we'd be expecting a report, they're on track and on schedule for their report. Do we have any agenda requests for National Committee of, yes?
I don't have an agenda request, but I'd like to ask if we could, on Thursday night, have a brief presentation on the requirements of the tree ordinance and what that entails. So, citizens and our, the contractors, the tree companies that are in our community are aware of. I had a situation today, while walking this morning, of a tree that appeared to be a heritage oak. It certainly was an oak, I wasn't mistaken about that part, but the actual diameter of it, and I asked a simple question of, was it measured? And is there a permit and that sort of thing? And through the process, called 311, which worked perfectly, by the way, for council members and citizens that are listening, it was a very good call to make. But it was unclear because the pine tree, you don't have to do a permit at all, okay? But you have to have a permit for cutting of a heritage oak and hickory, and there's several others on the list. But the flaw that appears to be is that if someone, what is their process for doing an estimate and measuring? How do they report that, yes, they've measured and it is below the required size and they are able to cut it? It's a, it's a unknown area, if you will. Not that I'm saying a permit would be needed for those trees, but an acknowledgement that their commitment to measuring the tree has been accommodated.
Okay.
So, I'd like a presentation, just very briefly, on Thursday night, on the tree ordinance.
Got it, Mr. Reynolds. Anything else? Yeah. Congressman Johnson.
Uh, yeah, thank you very much, and I'll look forward to that presentation, too. I had a few other real quick things. It's really new business. I've had a call from a constituent complaining about large political signs in neighborhoods. I'm not sure what the ordinance is on that, but three-by-fives in residential neighborhoods that are all popping up everywhere, and I'm not sure if that's allowable or not. If someone could let me know that, I did get a complaint about that.
Yes, sir, and, and probably not a bad idea, much like Chairwoman DeWise had put forward on the oaks, if not to have a presentation, a brief presentation on that issue as well so everybody knows and understands what the requirements are. We can certainly do that Thursday.
And I'm not sure if it's three-by-five, but they're large signs-
Sure.
-in residential areas. The other thing was, um, you know, I, I hate to bring this one up, but recently, there's been some disturbing emails and comments, and, you know, I, I'm not sure where we're at security. I went to the county commission meeting recently and went through a metal detector with a security guard, and I, I'll tell you, occasionally, I think there's a, there's a, we're, we're really not protected that well, and please excuse me, Chief Simmons and, and the audience, but, you know, I, I just, at some point, I'm wondering when we will come into the 20th century and have metal detectors as every other governmental building in the Scambia County has. Um, you know, I, again, some, some things that have been said in the community really concern me, and I think we personally need better protection down here. And I'd like to bring that forth, and at some point, maybe not Thursday night, maybe not the next council, but I think at some, at some point, I'd, I'd like to see us get metal detectors and, and better, better security down here. That's the second thing. And the third thing is, you know, I was reading, I read the charter often, and I came to point, excuse me, section four, point oh-three, City Council, and I would like to have a discussion at some point about meeting once a month. I, right now, we meet, uh, uh, at least four months a, a year. We only meet once a month, that being June, July, November, and December, and it seems to be adequate for conducting the business. The city council has to, and I don't know how my other city councilmen feel about that, but I'd like to get that out there publicly, that I've actually had folks talk to me about why we seem to meet so often, that our business could be conducted monthly. Right now, I look in the audience, we have three members of our community here, and they're, and they're here just about every meeting, and that's, that's great, but I'm getting comments of people why we meet so often, that it, that it may be that we, once a month, would be adequate for the city council to meet a committee whole on Monday and on Thursday nights. Again, four out of the 12 months a year, we do that. So, I'd like to have that discussion put, placed on the agenda if we could. Thank you.
Thank you. Congressman, Representative-
Well, I, I'm gonna bring this up when I do a little more investigation of it, since you brought up the tree ordinance. I was so excited when the county put in sidewalks, started putting in sidewalks on Sanders, but the other day, I could not believe my eyes when they, when somebody cut down a tree that was, that I measured was almost five feet in diameter, a heritage oak. Unbelievable. And I, I have not been able to find out, I, I believe that the, the county did it. It's on the city-county line, and I am just horrified. That tree must have been at least, I, I would estimate it to be 400 years old, and they could have easily have built that sidewalk around that tree. They're curving sidewalk in different directions anyway, but, I mean, you know, this is, is, was a horrendous act, I'm very upset about it. It impacts, you know, the, the city because it's basically, you know, right there on the city-county line, it impacts the neighborhood, the beauty of the neighborhood. It was absolutely a senseless act, and I, the first thing I thought about when I saw it is, in the past, I would have called Larry Johnson, you know? But-
Call him today.
But, uh, you, you would have just, you, you couldn't have, I, I have pictures of it, by the way. I have pictures of what was left of the, the base of it before they took it away.
I, I don't need to see that, make me sick.
Well, it's, it's making me really sick, and I've contacted the county. So far, I ha, I, I, I don't know if the contractor who has the contract to do the sidewalk just decided, I can't seem to locate a permit from anybody to allow that tree to be cut down. There may not even have been a permit, I don't know. But anyway, I'm getting details on that, and we need to let the county know that, you know, that, that this kind of activity, even if it's technically in the county, but it's in the city, is unacceptable. You know, this tree would not have been cut down had it been in the city. It would not, this would not have been allowed.
Well, was it in the county or city?
It was unfortunately on the other side of the street in the county, literally on the city-county line.
Have you, have you shared that?
Yes, yes, I have talked to Keith Wilkins about it.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Gerald.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, and I'll say this, and hopefully, we'll be heading home. In the absence of a clear permitting process, whoever license or allow people to, to cut trees in the city and the county, in the absence of clear written directions, we will continue to have this discussion, because I would think, and I've never taken a tree down, well, a small tree, I have to be like, "Well, George, I can't tell a lie." I did whack a few small trees before they got too big. But in the absence of a clear, clearly defined procedure, because when a person goes out to cut a tree, they have time to measure it, you don't just go out and cut it down right then. They have an opportunity to measure, and if that, those are the kinds of things we want to happen, we're going to have to have a clear-cut ordinance, a clear-cut procedure that everyone has to follow, both the city and the county. And in the absence of that, the problem will continue.
Okay.
I'll make it real quick, and, and, the county's tree ordinance, I believe, there is restrictions on 60 inches DBH, which, if it's a five-foot in diam, diameter tree, that would be 60 inches, of course, so there, there's restrictions on those trees. So, I would suggest trying to get a hold of Mr. Wilkins, he, I saw him today, he was here, and, but there, there are, I think 60 DBH is what the county limit is on cutting those, and anything above that, I think there's restrictions. Just an FYI, thank you.
Okay. Let's have some cake.
Okay, meeting adjourned, there's some cake in the bag for celebrate Congresswoman DeWise's birthday.